Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the February eleventh school board meeting. If you would, please stand with me at the pledge of allegiance. Why'd we move it? Okay, we put it over here this week, so. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hey, that's a good gag. Let's move the flag around.
Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Laura Hemmick. I serve as the superintendent of our school district, and I just want to personally welcome you all to our board meeting tonight. We love that our school board meetings start with celebrations of our purpose, which is the students that we are gifted to serve every day. And today, tonight, is very special because we are honoring not just our students of the month, but we are honoring some pretty extraordinary celebrations in athletics. And so, we're going to start off with that, and I'm going to turn things over to Mr. Garrett Daniel, who is our athletic director here at the high school. And he's going to celebrate three extraordinary teams that have brought us home some conference championships. Mr. Daniel? Yes?
Yes, so, good evening. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to recognize the incredible achievements of our Beach Grove Lady Hornets. It has been an outstanding year for our athletic programs. Tonight, we celebrate our conference championship team. So, we have girls wrestling, girls swimming, and girls basketball. This does mark our fourth conference championship of the year, joining our girls cross-country team this fall. These achievements reflect the dedication, hard work, and passion of all our student athletes who have demonstrated excellence both individually and as a team. Along the way, we've also witnessed some incredible individual performances, which our coaches will highlight shortly. But before that, I want to take a moment to express a huge thank you to our coaching staffs. The time, effort, and dedication they put into the programs are second to none, and their leadership is a key reason we are here tonight celebrating these remarkable accomplishments. So, we're gonna get started by recognizing our girls wrestling team. Our girls team is led by Coach Ryan Williams.
And Coach Phil Smiley. This year has been very, very exciting with these ladies. The first year, we started with Jaden and Alyssa, who are here today. Everybody couldn't make it today. They're busy doing other sports, getting ready for spring seasons. But, started a few years ago with four wrestlers, and the two here were on that first initial group of four. Then the next year, it quadrupled in size, had sixteen wrestlers last year. At one point this year, we were up to twenty-three wrestlers for a small school. Beach Grove is considered a small school, especially in Marion County. We were one of the largest girls wrestling teams in the state of Indiana. We finished, the regular season, we wrestled six dual meets. We finished five and one. The only team that we did get beat by, we lost by twenty-four points, and that's the amount of points that we gave up because we didn't have all the weight classes filled. That team also was the number-one team in the state Franklin Central. So, the only team that this girls team lost to was the number-one team in the state in regular dual meets. These girls continue to push back, put back into, you know, the sport that's, you know, provided for them. At conference, we had ten champions of, there's fourteen total weight classes. We won ten of them. We are a very young team with sprinkled in with four seniors, I believe, right? Don't want to miss anybody, but we had, like I said, ten out of the fourteen girls were conference champions, and we won by a lot of points. We're excited to move to the new conference next year and win that one, too. The girls are continuing, obviously. If you notice, they didn't dress up tonight because they're leaving here and going right to practice. We've, we're putting together some teams for them to go compete nationally out in Iowa in April. They're excited about that, I think, every single one there. We were also fortunate to have four state qualifiers this year. That was one of the larger numbers of schools, or larger number of girls per school. I think seven was the highest, or eight. We had four, so that's pretty incredible. We had, our four were here tonight. Freshman Caitlin Dibbern, step forward. Senior Amaya Miller. Sophomore Anna McCarty. Anna finished eighth place, and she was officially our first IHSA, because IHSA officially launched this year for girls wrestling. She was our first state medalist officially. And Jaden Madry, senior, also finished eighth in the state. And something else exciting, next month, March fifteenth, Jaden was invited to be part of the Indiana-Illinois All-Star Team, and she gets to go to Illinois and compete against the best that Illinois has to offer. So, it's a really great opportunity, and just lots of great stuff for these girls. But, it's been a fun season. Coach, you have anything?
No, they're fun girls, they're coach. When they first started asking me in Coach Girls Wrestling, I'm like, what? That's crazy. These girls are, I called them savages all year long because no matter what the school was or where we found ourselves, they were gonna figure out a way to win. And in a world where we complain about this generation not working very hard, these girls love that state of outlook. They work their tails off every day, and it couldn't be any more fun to be a part of them, so.
Awesome, thank you, guys.
All right, next up, we're gonna have our girls swimming team led by head coach Caitlin Bowser. Sorry, we have so many. They're kinda hiding in the back.
Alrighty, so first, I just want to say thank you so much to my two amazing assistant coaches, Dawn and Brittany, right here. This season would not be possible without the help from the two of them. There's been a lot going on in all three of our personal lives, so it's been really nice to be able to rely on one another. And to all of these eleven lovely ladies standing behind me, they did so, so amazing at conference and at sectionals this past weekend. I am so incredibly proud of each and every single one of them. All of the hard work that we put in this season has really paid off, and it showed at conference, when we won for the first time in sixteen years, which has, as an alumni, was always a dream when I swam here. So, it is even more amazing, you know, as the coach, to get to see all of the hard work that each and every single one of them put in to be able to make that possible. Sorry. We have an extremely young team, so I'm really excited to see the growth that we can create, that we can continue over the next four years. We have five freshmen of eleven, and then we have two sophomores, so seven, or three sophomores. So, eight of the eleven are all gonna be returning for the next three to four, or two to three years. Sadly, we will be losing Angie right here, our one senior. So, we're really excited to see what we can do over the next couple of years. At conference, we had a couple individuals, if you could step forward, Maddie in the five hundred, right here. She, she got first place in the five hundred and second place in the two hundred. And then again, this past weekend at sectionals, she made it on into the B final where she was seeded, fourteenth, and got thirteenth. So, that was really amazing, and dropped the most time she's done this whole season to get, end her season at a six-twelve. So, that's Maddie. Up next, we have Sam. Sam won the one hundred fly, and her goal this season was to see how much time she could drop in it, never having swam a hundred fly before. In the middle school, you swim fifty fly. And just this season alone, she is nine seconds, fourteen seconds off of the high school record. So, she still has three more years to get that. Yeah, I think it's nine. I'm pretty sure it's nine now. So, congratulations to Sam. On relays, we did have two relays that also got first place at conference. So, our two hundred medley relay is Abby, Aspen, Sam, and Maddie. They were our relay the whole season. They also made it on and were seeded ninth and got ninth this past weekend at sectionals, and dropped, I think, a total of five sectionals over the two days of sectionals, so. Sorry, five seconds over the past, the two days of sectionals. So, and then also, these four young ladies are also our four hundred freestyle relay, who also won first place at conference, which was really amazing to see. We're really excited to see the continued growth of the team. And this past weekend, we just ended our season on Saturday, seeding, replacing ninth of twelve at sectionals. So, thank you so much.
Just a fun little stat. Last year, we actually finished the season with zero girls swimmers. So, to have the huge turnaround we did in a year from zero to eleven is a huge accomplishment, and I'll see all the success they had. So, we're excited about the future there. Okay, finally, girls basketball led by head coach Amy Selt. Please join us up here.
All right, hello. First of all, thank you very much for having us here. We appreciate the honor of being recognized tonight at the school board meeting. Over here to my left is our varsity girls basketball team. Second of all, congratulations to all of our girls this past winter. Really kicking, kicking butt. So, congrats wrestling and swimming. Way to, way to go. As we close out our twenty-four, twenty-five season, we finished with a record of twelve and twelve overall, and we were six and one in conference. And, you know, I'm at the point in our season where we're doing a lot of postseason evaluations, and, you know, we'll do exit interviews and postseason nominations. And so, I was looking at some stats and looking at the past. And when I got first hired on in the twenty-one, twenty-two season, we finished with a conference record of one and six. So, really happy that those numbers actually flipped to this year being six and one. So, a lot of hard work contested to these girls over here. We first talked about this season, how we're gonna handle adversity. When things don't go our way, how are we gonna respond? When their backs up against the wall, what are we gonna do? How are we gonna act? What's our attitude? So, first, you know, you know, we, after our first game, we, Harper Moore went down with a severe injury. She's our sophomore standout ICC player. She has twelve point five points, five point five rebounds. But a lot of kids had to step up. A lot of kids had to handle the basketball, run our offense, make some plays, score the basketball, all while I'm yelling at them. So, they put themselves in the best position possible to be successful. And, you know, everybody and anybody made a huge contribution to our successful season. But three that I really want to denote and, you know, as key contributors on a performance level. Miley Bowling, she's a senior for us. She just was shy of a double-double on the season. She was averaging fifteen points, nine point seven rebounds. Also, she netted a thousand points of her career just this past, recently. So, that's a huge accomplishment, not only for an individual, but if you watch the film and you watch the, you listen, all the girls were really trying to help Miley out, give the ball to Miley. So, it was a huge team accomplishment as well. Mariah Marshall is over here to the right. She's a sophomore for us. She tallied nine point five points per game, four rebounds. And then Emma Mix over here to my left, a senior who she will be graduating. She locked in six point two points per game and two point seven rebounds per game. And I don't want to miss our JV team. They had a winning record of eleven and ten on the season, so congrats to our JV team. Because, again, two years ago, we did not have a JV team. We only had thirteen girls on the roster. So, to put, put forth two squads is awesome, and again, contest to their hard work. And lastly, I want to talk about our five seniors that will be graduating in May. So, I believe they're all here besides Miley. But they really have set the foundation, the expectation, and the standard to what it means to be Beach Grove Girls Basketball. It hasn't been easy, and it, you know, it isn't simple, but they really bought into, you know, keeping, keeping whatever it is and maintaining that legacy and, you know, really made an impact in turning the program around. So, through the challenges and the lessons learned and the growth, the growths and the triumphs really makes my position, you know, very heartwarming and heartfelt. So, in closing, we can't thank you, you know, the support from, you know, superintendent. You came to speak to us, appreciate that. The board members, athletic director, all of our other fans and friends and family. You guys showed out to Indian Creek that first game. A lot of, you know, my, my friends and family said that there's a lot of orange in the stands, and I don't pay attention to that, but we really appreciate the encouragement and the support and engagement. So, I'm really proud of this team and everything that they, you know, accomplished. Even though we'll be losing five seniors, you know, I think it's gonna, we're gonna keep going. We keep growing, and, you know, more wins will come for Beach Grove Girls Basketball. Thank you.
All right, so once again, congratulations to all of our teams. Thank you to the board for taking time to recognize your success. We look forward to continue this movement for Beach Grove Athletics into our new conference next year. We'll kind of transition now really quickly to recognize our offered insurance athletes of the month. So, I'm actually gonna call back up Coach Williams and Coach Smiley. Okay, Coach Williams only, because Smiley's gonna coach. Along with Anna McCarty and Jaden Williams. Madry, sorry. I'll actually just let Coach Williams talk. He likes talking anyways. He can talk a little bit about Anna and Jaden and their accomplishments this year and while they're the athletes of the month.
I don't know if you heard, she told me she didn't want to be my daughter anyway. But she's in my classroom every single day. Every day. No, it's, it's been, we'll start with, both of these ladies have been up here before. Not only are they two great students, and that's where it all starts, they're just, they're two great kids. They do the right thing. They show up to school every day. When they're here, they have no problems in their classrooms. Zero. Jaden thinks she may know too much sometimes, but. But, really, she, they both are just wonderful kids for the most part, and just do what is asked. In the wrestling room this year, they were leaders both, and, you know, when you put, put the work in, when you put the time in, it, you know, they say the proof is in the pudding. And they, they bought in. They worked hard. They, in the summertime, they both traveled to Fort Lauderdale to compete at the national, at a national tournament, and both did very, very well. They put in time wrestling to many, many different events, national events. They just do what it takes to be great. You know, you could go and wrestle two months in a season and just be okay. And you're never gonna, if you've ever wrestled before, you know that the wrestlers that put the two months in, they'll be okay, but they're not gonna be great usually. These two, they really put the work in. It was so exciting to have four of the girls at the state tournament this year. And it was just a pretty awesome experience to walk in that arena, see the pictures, to see the, all the fans. We had just a lot of alumni. Couple of the parents of my teammates, when I went to school here, their aunts and their, and their sis, his sisters, and, you know, the, the Chalices and the Ringhams, and they were all there supporting. Officer Rinks was there. It was, you know, great seeing all that for them. But, what I said about them when I, I will start with Anna. Anna wrestled in the inaugural IHSA. I think I said the same thing about both of them. Championship on Friday, January seventeenth, and placed eighth in the state. Along with her three teammates who also compete in this amazing event, she was able to capture a first-round win to guarantee placement in the state tournament. These girls not only broke barriers, but captured our first state medals in this sport and school history.
Don't forget the less important part.
They're giving that to me. So, Anna McCarty and Jaden Madry, your Alfred Insurance Athletes of the Month.
While we are taking their pictures so that we can share all the goodness on social media and with our families, we'll transition into our celebration of our students of the month. How we do this, very simply, the principal will be called up. We'll say wonderful things about the student being celebrated, and then that principal and the student will take their photo. Steph will take her photo while the next is coming up. Once we get through our five buildings, then we will take a little break in our meeting. And you are welcome to leave at that time, but you're also, before you make that transition, you're welcome to take pictures as a family. Many families like to take photos in front of the Hornet to celebrate such an incredible achievement that is being the student of the month. Before I hand it over to our principals, I just wanted to pause to just say thank you to our families that are in attendance tonight. If your child is being celebrated for being student of the month, that is a very big deal. All of our schools have at least five hundred students that attend, and tonight, your child is one of that number that is being celebrated. So, congratulations to you, and thank you for all that you have poured into your child to get them to this place. So, we'll start off with Hornet Park, and I will ask Mr. Rob Adenson, principal of Hornet Park, to celebrate his student of the month.
Can the athletes go and sneak out a little bit?
Nope, not one bit. No, sorry. You guys have to stay. No, we love you guys so much. Yes, please go, and congratulations on your success. Thank you for being here.
All right, so, our Hornet Park student of the month is Emerson Clark. And so, while I was listening to all those wonderful athletes, I was thinking a little bit about Emerson because I hear all that hard work and all the leadership. And even though he's a first grader, Emerson really is a leader. As I read through some of the things that the teachers and the adults at Hornet Park said, and every time I go in Emerson's room in Mrs. Jennings' class, he is doing what he is supposed to be doing. And it's kind of hard to get first graders to always be on task and be kind to their peers, and Emerson does a really good job of that. So, Mrs. Jennings says, excuse me, Emerson is respectful, sweet, and an all-around awesome student. Emerson works so hard in class and doesn't give up when something is hard. Emerson is someone that everyone enjoys being around because he is such a good friend. We love Emerson. And then his kindergarten teacher, Mrs. Dom, said, Emerson always had a big smile coming into our kindergarten classroom last year. He is a great friend to all and tries his best in all that he does. And then Mrs. Reed said, Emerson has been an outstanding student since he started kindergarten last year. He comes to school happy and ready to learn. He is kind to others and respectful to all. Emerson is blessed to have such a wonderful family that surrounds him with love and support. I can't wait to see what great things Emerson accomplishes in Beach Grove City Schools. So, yeah, Emerson is a real role model who treats his peers well and has a respect and maturity beyond his years. Way to go, Emerson.
Next up, we'll have Mrs. Cotter from South Grove Elementary School.
I know, we bet. I love it. I love it. This is Andrew Wilkerson Honeycutt, and he is a fourth grader with us at South Grove. And it's so exciting to, to honor him this evening. He was nominated by Mrs. Horan, his homeroom teacher. And Mrs. Horan said that Andrew gives a hundred percent in all of his schoolwork, even when it's difficult. He's well behaved, and he always follows her expectations. She's so proud of you, Andrew. Now, I'm gonna wind it back to second grade, because I asked his other teachers, right? I wanted to see how, what they had to say. So, Mrs. Ringham shared, she says, I had Andrew in second grade. He was always such a good kid. He was so kind to his classmates, always ready for a good laugh with his sense of humor, and was great at being responsible and respectful. He embodies the Hornet way. And then last year's teacher, Mrs. Doertie, says, Andrew was a hard worker who consistently demonstrated kindness and respect towards his classmates and teachers. He's willing to try different strategies in math, which showed his determination and eagerness to learn. I'm so happy to hear he's doing well in fourth grade. Mrs. Yeoman, one of his teachers, shared, Andrew has shown so much growth in advocating for himself. He communicates when he doesn't understand something, and he's willing to help his classmates. He loves to share stories about his pig. I'm gonna get that story later, because I didn't know about that one. I love it. She said, I'm very proud of his accomplishments throughout the years. Mr. V said, Andrew is a model student at South Grove. He listens, follows directions, is kind to everyone, and is an all-around great kid. I know Andrew will be successful in the future, and he has great things coming his way. great things coming his way. My favorite Andrew story is last year at the community Thanksgiving dinner, and he said, I don't want to leave Central, keep me in third grade. And I was like, Andrew, you gotta go to South Grove, buddy. Sorry, we're gonna miss you. But then in a few, a few months later, I got to say, guess what? I'm coming too. You're stuck with me. And it has been awesome to see this kiddo grow from second to third to fourth grade. And he's doing so well and we're so proud of you. So congratulations, Andrew, for being Student of the Month.
Very good. Next up, we have Mr. Carr, Principal of Central Intermediate School.
Thank you. Central Student of the Month is Miss Andy Ahouse. Come on up. Andy was nominated by her teacher, Ms. Solar, and a big shout out to Mr. and Mrs. Solar for being attendance and.
And Baby Solar.
And Baby Solar, who could be Baby of the Month. Andy's a, definitely a bright light around Central. Always walking around with a smile on her face, always looking to help out, whether it's in the classroom or with a peer, in the cafeteria, just whatever is needed, she's always willing to step up and just do what it takes. So we greatly appreciate Andy around Central. One of, one of her teachers said, Andy's a hardworking student. She's very helpful inside the classroom, doing things such as cleaning up the floor, or always asking for different ways that she can help. She's a regular participant inside the classroom during lessons. Recently, she has added being a peer consultant for a student that could use help bouncing their ideas back and forth. Instead of just doing it with adults in the classroom, chose to do it with Andy. Andy is, always has a smile on her face and is such a joy to interact with during the school day. Andy's a very easy nomination for Central's Student of the Month. Good job.
And next up, Mr. Morgan, Principal of Beach Grove Middle School.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to introduce you to our Student of the Month, Shannon Green. Shannon's teacher says, it is with great pleasure that I write this letter recognizing the achievements of Shannon Green. Miss Green is, is the epitome of what it means to be a Beach Grove Hornet. She not only excels in academics, but she has also developed personal qualities that will mold her into a productive and responsible citizen. She is always prompt, completes assigned tasks before deadlines with a high level of quality, and most importantly, conducts herself professionally and with a degree of maturity that is rare amongst her peers. Shannon is a student who even when having a bad day, carries through her adversity with determination, a positive attitude, and a smile on her face. I have witnessed her comforting distraught peers, assisting others with their academics, and always adding a radiant energy to the classroom. She is engaged, focused, and will be as successful at any endeavor she pursues. It is an absolute pleasure to be her English teacher, and she is most deserving of this recognition. Congratulations, Shannon.
And I would second everything that her English teacher said.
And lastly, Mr. Austin, Principal of Beach Grove High School.
It is my honor to recognize Camille Delk as our Beach Grove High School Student of the Month. So these words are from Mr. Wen and Mrs. Chapman, Camille's music teachers. They are pleased to recognize Camille Delk, sorry, for her exceptional dedication, work ethic, and leadership within our music program. Camille is an outstanding student who continually demonstrates a deep passion for music and an unwavering commitment to excellence across multiple musical ensembles. She is an active member of our choir concert band, our choir, concert choir, our concert band, our jazz band, show choir band, and also our winter percussion ensemble. Her versatility and skill in each of these areas highlights not only her musical ability but also her ability to adapt and excel in diverse musical settings. Whether performing in a large ensemble or a smaller specialized group, she brings enthusiasm and discipline to every rehearsal and performance. In addition to her ensemble work, Camille also earned recognition for her vocal talents qualifying her for state solo and ensemble contests, both as a soloist and as part of a vocal ensemble. This achievement is a testament to her vocal skills and her countless hours of practice that she dedicates to perfecting her craft. Beyond her performance capabilities, Camille also is an inspiring leader. She participates in our advanced music instruction class where she mentors and guides middle school band students. Her ability to work with younger musicians, offering encouragement and expertise, speaks to her maturity, patience, and dedication to fostering the next generations of musicians here at Beach Grove. Camille consistently exemplifies the quality of hard work, teamwork, and leadership. She is a role model for her peers and an invaluable asset to our music program. Camille is a fantastic student who currently holds a 3.7 GPA while being involved in so many after-school activities. Most evenings, you will find Camille practicing with one of her many ensembles in our high school music department. She takes advantage of many of the opportunities we provide for students to perform and share their love for music. It is our great pleasure to nominate Camille for our Beach Grove High School Student of the Month as she truly deserves to be celebrated for her outstanding contributions to our school community. Congratulations.
Well, once again, congratulations to all of our Students of the Month and your families. We are so unbelievably proud of you and so grateful that you are a Beach Grove City Schools student. So what we're going to do is, over the next five minutes, we're gonna take a little break. You can take any photographs that you would like. And then, if you would like to stay for the rest of the meeting, you are welcome to, but you are certainly not expected to. So in about five minutes, we will reorganize as a board and continue the rest of our meeting. But for now, we wish you a wonderful evening and congratulations to all of you. There are three components to this incredible grant opportunity. So 450 total million dollars have been allocated to the public schools in Marion County. Beach Grove is able to access a portion of those resources depending on the grant itself. So there are three phases to this grant. The first grant was the planning grant, where every district was allocated $50,000. And those dollars in Beach Grove have been allocated towards several purposes, primarily the development of a comprehensive strategic plan that allows for us to get community input to ultimately ideate and realize strategies for implementation that would be manifested during the second and third phases of this grant. So that $50,000 was awarded to every single district in Marion County to plan. That's where we are sort of right now, in the midst of our planning work. have granted organizations across the state countless dollars. I can't even imagine how much they have gifted if it were all added together. But specifically for our purpose tonight, Beach Grove City Schools is one of 11 public school districts in Marion County. And the endowment shared the extraordinary news this summer that they would be gifting up to $450 million. I'll say that one more time. $450 million specifically to public schools in Marion County for three purposes. And I'm going to kind of talk about those purposes here in a second. There are three components to this incredible grant opportunity. So $450 total million have been allocated to the public schools in Marion County. Beach Grove is able to access a portion of those resources depending on the grant itself. So there are three phases to this grant. The first grant was the planning grant where every district was allocated $50,000. And those dollars in Beach Grove have been allocated towards several purposes, primarily the development of a comprehensive strategic plan that allows for us to get community input to ultimately ideate and realize strategies for implementation that would be manifested during the second and third phases of this grant. So that $50,000 was awarded to every single district in Marion County to plan. That's where we are sort of right now in the midst of our planning work. The implementation grant was allocated according to each school district's membership. So the number of students that you serve was multiplied by $500 per student. And for Beach Grove, that ended up being a $1.34 million allocation. On Monday, we submitted our Phase Two application. This is a non-competitive grant. However, we understand that if the grant is not sort of written according to their specifications, then those dollars would not be awarded. But we are feeling very confident about our grant submission. And I would hope that soon, maybe in the next month, we will be coming back to you all with great news about that Phase Two grant being awarded. We'll talk a little bit about what will be included in that Phase Two grant here in a minute. And then last but not least, and these are numbers that make my jaw drop because this is like what we like to say, this is life-changing money. These are the amount of resources that could completely change the trajectory of the population of students that we serve by providing them with life-ready opportunities that will elevate them and launch them into their next step, whatever that might be. That is a $25 million allocation for a district our size. So if you are a district that is larger than Beach Grove, then your allocation for Phase Three is commensurately larger. But we can apply for up to $25 million in that Phase Three. The three priority areas for this grant are that you need to have strategies that improve academic achievement, that improve post-secondary success, or address challenges and opportunities that can affect academic achievement or post-secondary success. So those might be things like attendance strategies, which clearly is a data point for Beach Grove that we are really working on, really doubling down. So any sort of initiative that would interrupt your ability to academically achieve or your ability to achieve post-secondary readiness, these would be factors that we could solve for in this grant application. So how Beach Grove decided to navigate this in consultation and coordination with our school board is that we thought it would be very important for us to engage in a comprehensive strategic plan process because we did not have a viable strategic plan in place. So we are doing that now. That entire process is looking to be completed in March. We've had an incredible opportunity to engage with several different groups of individuals. We'll talk about that here in just a second. With board representation, super grateful. School leader and district leader representation. Students, which has been one of my favorite parts of this process. Parents as well. And ultimately, we will be able to provide to our board in June a full implementation of our strategic plan, to which the board, I'm hoping, will hold me accountable monthly. I should be reporting to you on our measurable outcomes in our strategic plan monthly. If I'm not, I'm not doing my job, so I need you to hold me accountable for that. These will all be measurable ways for us to update our board and our community on the progress that we're making towards increasing academic achievement, improving post-secondary opportunities for success, and any of the other factors that might be included with that. So these are the different groups that we've been working with. A group called Education Elements has been working us through this process. They've been coming to Beach Grove, so it's not as if we've needed to take a team other places. They come to us, and we've been really benefiting from their work and working with schools across the nation, really being a guide through this process. The project team, that ended up being myself and Mary Story, our Director of Teaching and Learning. We are sort of the facilitators of all the different adventures that we've been going down with our strategic planning. And our steering team is this sort of coordinated group. Tara from our board is our school board representative on our steering team. Thank you, Tara. She's been participating in day-long strategy sessions as we've been really building out this plan. And we have teachers. We have incredible representatives that are in this room that are on our steering team. Thank you for being here tonight. And they have been incredible in their ideation. And now we're sort of in the specific strategy selection of this plan. So these are the sort of the three working groups as we've been getting this work taken care of. This is how it has gone. We planned and aligned in October, November. Our foundation's work is where we collected data. We did comprehensive surveying. We're actually in our second round of surveying now to refine the work that we are doing currently with our steering committee. We had conducted a number of different focus groups, which we'll sort of highlight here in just a moment. We're currently in what we call design, and that's where our strategies have been sort of established. But now we are ideating the mechanisms in which we will realize those strategies. And then last but not least, we'll look to launch. And I would imagine that we'll have a board presentation to invite you all to this launch and then using our State of the Schools presentation to our chamber to really launch this work with our community as well. It's kind of our planning phase for the deployment of the plan. So here, I just wanted to show you some data points. First, we had eight different focus groups. Ninety-one people participated. Those were live, in-person, or via Zoom engagements that allowed for students and teachers and staff, community members, parents, guardians to give feedback. Very sort of deep dive into some focus groups, about an hour each for each of those sessions. And then we had nearly 2,000 survey responses in our first iteration, which is extraordinary. Education Elements was so pleased with that number. And quite frankly, they do not see numbers of returns like this and were very, very proud of the Beach Grove community for their engagement. Here, just wanted to show you just some examples. First off, these are just some of the focus group questions that were asked in different categories as they were presented. One of the categories that we wanted to learn a little bit more about, one of like seven, is that sort of what is access and communication like? What is your lived experience with communication here in the district? And we have learned some really important ahas. And we've also learned ways, strategies that are working well. So just really trying to use that data to improve our strategies. Here, this is showing just one of the data points that was realized in another category. And this is actually elicited from the survey side of the house. So data that was elicited from focus groups, data that has been elicited from surveying. And here, under curriculum and instruction, you can just sort of get a sense for the kind of data that was presented to the steering committee who took a deep dive into the data to kind of pull out the sort of, I wonder why the data is looking like this. This, we're very pleased why the data is looking like this, and what are some areas where we can improve. This is what the plan will ultimately look like. So we are, at this point, established with our mission and our vision and our core values. We are calling the pillars our strategic goal areas. So we have four. Right now, we're working on the ideation work for our strategic objectives. And then ultimately, we will have the actual initiatives, the things that are being done in order to elicit change and the measurable outcomes that we will be sort of going after as a result of that work. So this is where we are right now. This is how far we've gotten. We have ideated that. We have four strategic goal areas. First, the first strategic goal that you will be holding me accountable for is community engagement and communication. Second is under wellness and belonging. Third, teaching and learning. And fourth, leadership and development. And an important nuance here, this is for our students, this is for our staff, this is for our community. So these are goal areas that will be inclusive of all of those members. This is just an example of how granular we're getting in some of this steering committee work. We're defining what the strategic goal actually is because we feel like in order to have a sort of working definition, that will ultimately drive the actual strategies that will allow for these goals to be elicited. This has all been workshopped. This is not just Laura sort of putting words on paper or Education Elements putting words on paper. Every time that the steering committee gets together, we are divided out now in strategic goal areas. We're unpacking, we're workshopping the language and doing some pretty comprehensive research together in order to get these very specific and nuanced outcomes. It's kind of where we are. We're working what's called a design thinking process in order to get to the end of this plan. We have engaged in the first strategy with this empathizing, and that's our survey and our focus groups, really getting an understanding of what the community is wanting us to hear. Some of those things are great. Some of those things are not so great, and that's okay. Really, living with the not so great has allowed for us to grow, be real about the areas that we need to improve. And so we're excited that now with this grant, we have mechanisms to be able to address some of those areas of concern. So we went through the definition. That's when we got real granular about what we were looking at. The ideation work and the prototyping, we began in our last session. And then we have February 26th coming up with our steering committee, and then two more days where we will test our prototypes and then work on ways in which we will engage and obtain feedback. So that if the strategy that we were sort of expecting would have a favorable outcome doesn't, we can step back, analyze, reboot, and redeploy. So this is kind of a circular process that allows for us to always have our best work. Just wanted to show you, this is where we are right now, kind of second iteration of survey. So our first iteration of survey was that incredible outcome of almost 2,000 responses. Now we're going back to the community and have asked for them to do some prioritization of some of the strategies. So it's not just the steering committee that's coming up with some of these strategies. It's getting feedback from the community on where they're hoping to see some of these outcomes be prioritized. This is just an example of one, looking at academic success for all students. Oh, I duplicated my slide. What I wanted to show you here is that how our Phase Two grant showed up and married with our work that we're doing with our strategic plan. The top four sort of strands here are our strategic goal areas that have already been ideated. Improving academic achievement, improving post-secondary success, and addressing those challenges have shown up in our grant in every one of those domains. So sort of beautifully, the work of the plan and the work of the grant have married together. And this was actually part of our Phase Two grant submission, evidencing the fact that we're coming at this from a very objective and intentional way to realize these outcomes that Lilly is hoping to achieve. So we're very excited about that. This is my last slide. This is the slide that's sort of launching us now into Phase Three. Phase Three is that $25 million life-changing dollar amount where we are looking to have what's called a concept paper. So all districts are invited to submit a concept paper. It's only allowed to be five pages, if you can believe it, that establishes the vision for what we're trying to get accomplished with that significant amount of resource. That needs to be submitted by April the 7th. Don't worry, we're already working on it. Then Lilly will give us an invitation to participate in what's called a Phase Three proposal. So some districts might not be invited to participate. Beach Grove will be invited to participate in the Phase Three proposal, and I'm not speaking any other energy into this space except for that. So when we are invited to participate in that Phase Three proposal, we will be asked to go to the endowment and participate in interviews. So in May or June, we would interview our concept. And then we will be asked to submit a proposal, so a comprehensive proposal for the allocation of those resources. And that will be due sometime in August of this year. And then once they have all of that documentation, they are sharing that we will have an understanding of a word notification by December of 2025. So that is a massively fast turnaround in Grantland. Sometimes some of these things can take years to iterate, but this timeline has been incredibly swift. It will actually just be one year from sort of start to finish when these dollars are allocated here at the end of December. So I hope that, very much so, I know that in a few weeks when the endowment has reviewed our Phase Two application, which has been submitted, that I'll get to come back and update the board on what has been granted in Phase Two. And when that happens, then we'll be able to bring you in on some of the notions for our concept paper that will be happening over the next month. Lot and lot, a lot of time has been spent on this initiative. This is probably, well, I've said it before, and I don't mean to sound dramatic when I say it. It is the greatest professional responsibility of my career to get this landed for Beach Grove City Schools. And with that level of responsibility, it has been an obsession to just ensure that every step is covered so that our community doesn't miss out on these life-changing resources. So I commit that to you. And I just don't want to even envision any other outcome but that. Can I answer any questions for the board about strategic planning itself or the Lilly grant process? Thank you to Tara for being so deeply engaged in our work as a steering committee member. I love that you think it's fun.
I enjoyed it. I think everybody else was happy with it. It has been fun, and then it's gonna be a really...
Great thing for kids. Wonderful. Very good. All right, Ben. I am done.
Mr. Garmin, Personnel and Operations? I listed the current job openings that we have and just trying to follow the new format, some success stories and some challenges in each of these areas. So in personnel, some success stories, we had our second INPERS retirement workshop. We had seven attend, so I think that's positive. We still struggle to get our young people engaged in that. We do an orientation for new teachers, and we talk about the retirement, how it's structured. But just trying to get younger people to take notice of what their retirement benefits are. So it's such an integral part of their financial planning that we really need to do, I guess, just get more people involved in working with INPERS to figure out different ideas and different platforms that we might be able to use to increase that engagement. This one really probably doesn't fit necessarily under personnel, but I just wanted to mention that the K-12 robotics grant that we were gifted from the state last year, it's the growth in that program has been amazing. We have combined central and the middle school. We have over 20 kids that consistently engage. And I honestly didn't realize how much growth we had had until I had dinner with Mr. Hammack the other night. He's one of our assistant coaches helping with the program, and he's so enthusiastic about it. And he was telling me about the number of kids that we have. And so I'm really grateful for that money from the state and also looking forward to seeing this program grow even more. A current challenge, we are still trying to replace our JRTC staff. We lost Colonel Edens to retirement. That is a challenge. We experienced that when we brought Jason Thornberry on last time, trying to transfer Jason into Colonel Eden's former position. It's just really interesting to deal with trying to all kind of the bureaucracy of getting someone onboarded. So Mr. Austin and I have been working on that, and feel like every time we find the right person, we kind of take a couple steps back. So we're in the process of trying to get that filled. Last time, I believe it took us about four months, five months to actually get through all of the process to get someone in place. So continuing to work on that. Transportation, we did get our buses ordered. We got two large buses ordered. We got a smaller yellow bus ordered. We expect delivery in 12 to 18 months, so that was a positive. We locked in the 2024 pricing. We could have waited till after March 1st for the '25 pricing, but I think the fear is that that's going to maybe increase. So wanted to get those ordered before we saw an increase in the price. We also purchased a new bus lift for the transportation department. So if you get a chance, you want to see how that works. It's amazing. It lifts the buses right up and do all the work now. I think it's going to save a significant amount of money because essentially we won't have to send any of our work outside the corporation. Our in-house mechanic says he can pretty much do everything now, transmissions, exhaust systems, whatever it is that we need. So I think it's going to be money that will be paid back tenfold very quickly. Our challenge, bus prices increased a lot from the last time we ordered. I think we ordered last in 2023. Is that correct, Julie? We've seen about a $50,000 increase in the price of a large bus in that time period. So we hadn't anticipated that, but we'll make that adjustment and move forward. But we did have a significant increase in those prices. School safety, we have successfully incorporated the Alice scenarios. And this is a kind of a report from Chad Mann, who leads our corporation's school safety initiatives. Those scenarios, including passing periods, lunchtime, ensuring staff and students are prepared for a range of emergency situations. So big thanks to Mr. Mann for all of the work he does there. A current challenge we have, Mr. Austin and I have been working, I've been helping Mr. Austin with just helping secure the high school facility a little bit better. You know, high schools are very difficult to secure. So working particularly in the area of the performing arts down there to make sure that we are able to secure that area, that doors work properly, and that'll help. area, that doors work properly, and that'll help us, you know, overall, because that's a heavily trafficked area down there. So just kind of working with Mr. Austin to try to do a better job of securing our high school facility. Food service, I just want to give a, I guess, commend Clara, our new food service director through Chartwell. She is amazing at constantly working with me to find the best pricing on everything. And I can't imagine how much she saved us already because she has some contacts and resources that I don't know of, and so she's really great about that. So I just wanted to say, you know, thanks to her for all of her hard work. Current challenge in food service, really not a huge challenge, just that every year, even though we have a contract with Chartwell, the state requires us to go through a pretty lengthy process to renew that contract on a yearly basis. So getting all that paperwork submitted and that's required is just, it just takes time as time-consuming. Facilities and grounds, we are soliciting bids currently for our custodial services. That contract ends June 30th, and we are well into that process. In fact, I've got, I had one scheduled today, and I think I've got five more companies that are interested in bidding that wanted to see the facility. So that's kind of time-consuming. Takes about two hours to take them through all of our buildings so they can get a look at them, which helps them obviously prepare their bids. But hopefully, we'll have a recommendation to the board for the May meeting, maybe the April meeting, but I think we can say for sure by the May meeting that we'll have something in place, we'll be able to recommend a company. And our current challenge for facilities and grounds, maintenance is really the roofs. We have two roofs right now that are in bad shape, that we are in the process of getting those fixed. We're getting bids, finishing up the bidding process. The one is here in the high school, over the cafeteria and the kitchen. And the other is at the middle school, which kind of runs along the backside, the special education area, and the new student rep business. Those are in bad shape. We have some other roofs that we're going to need to get replaced as well. And so I'm meeting this week with Dale and Brent to just kind of look at the prioritization list that we have, really a better understanding where we are with these needs and thinking about how we're going to align the money that we're going to have available with the facility needs and the maintenance, you know, the repairs that we have that we know we have to get done, so we can keep our doors open, really prioritizing those. So that's it.
Can I get a motion to approve the employment recommendations as listed?
I'll move.
April? Janice? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. The next item on the agenda is for the board to hold its first preliminary determination hearing on the proposed construction projects. If you are a student speaking at the hearing, please make sure you've signed in. After the presentation by the administration and its advisors, there will be an opportunity for the public to make comments about the project. At this specific hearing, we ask that each person limit their comments to three minutes, and the topic be limited to the projects under construction. Notice this preliminary determination hearing was published legally as required, and at this time, I will ask Dr. Hammack to explain the books on this here.
Very good, thank you. So pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1, 1-20-3.1, a school corporation must hold two public hearings and adopt a resolution to preliminarily determine to issue bonds or enter a lease for a project which has a total project cost in excess of certain thresholds. These public hearings and the future consideration of resolutions are the very beginning of the legal process. We note that no board action is legally required at this hearing. Rather, this hearing is solely to hear public comment regarding the project.
We will now hear from Dr. Hammack about the process of determining and communicating the project to the community and the need for the project.
Right. So as we continue our commitment to providing safe, well-maintained, and efficient learning environments for our students, I would like to take this opportunity to update the board on our process of determining and communicating the need for this important project for our community. Over the past several months, our leadership team has carefully assessed the district's most pressing facility and infrastructure needs. And through a thoughtful and data-informed process, we have identified key capital improvements necessary to ensure that our schools remain safe, functional, and well-equipped to serve students for years to come. This initiative is focused on responsible stewardship of our school facilities, prioritizing projects that enhance the longevity and safety of our buildings, transportation, and infrastructure. Planned improvements include roofing repairs and replacements, paving projects to maintain safe and accessible parking areas and roadways across our campuses, HVAC system upgrades to improve air quality, energy efficiency, and overall comfort in learning spaces, school bus purchases to provide safe, reliable transportation for our students, and other critical capital improvements that support the long-term sustainability of our district facilities. As you know, our approach to these projects is rooted in thoughtful planning and fiscal responsibility. We are committed to keeping our community informed and engaged throughout this process, ensuring transparency as we work to maintain and enhance our district's infrastructure.
We will now hear from Dr. Hammack about how proposed projects meets the needs as just described.
Right. So ensuring safe, well-maintained learning environments is truly essential to the success of our students and staff. Many of our district's facilities require critical upgrades to support safety, accessibility, and overall building efficiency. Aging roofs, worn paving, security systems, and outdated HVAC systems can create safety hazards and disrupt the learning experience. By addressing these infrastructure needs now, we can prevent costly emergency repairs and extend the life of our schools. Upgrading HVAC systems will improve air quality and climate control, ensuring classrooms remain comfortable and conducive to learning. Roof repairs and paving enhancements will enhance safety for students, staff, and visitors. Additionally, replacing aging school buses will support reliable and secure transportation. These projects reflect our commitment to providing safe and high-quality learning environments where all students can thrive. We do expect that these projects would be executed within two or three years.
We will now...
Sure.
I think, perfect.
Yes.
We will now hear from our municipal advisors from Baker Tilly about how the proposed project will be financed, as well as information about the effect on the typical property taxpayer.
Very good. Good evening, friends. Thank you for being here. Beech Grove graduate in the house, we always like to say.
Joey Garnis, former alum.
Yes.
Is there a two financing, this is the first one we're talking about, without the outstanding debt service fund?
Sorry. Thank you. Out of the non-exempt debt service fund. And as part of this, just walking through the post-financing and walking through some estimates and maximums, just to build in just flexibility for the school corporation as it comes closer to the bond sale time. Right now, looking at maybe a June sale, as of right now, once the legislative session kind of ends and gives a school a better idea of what the future holds. So here on Slide 2, there's a picture of the schools, oh, sorry, did I have this right in front of them?
You'll want to have the preliminary determination.
Yes. So here on Slide 2 is a picture of the chart of the schools outstanding debt service, including both the non-exempt and exempt debt service fund. The blue bars are represented by the non-exempt, and the green bars are represented by the exempt debt service. Not going to dive into too much detail on this. On the next slide, gives a more detail on the non-exempt debt service fund, which is what this bond is going to be paid out of. So here on Slide 3, it contains the six bond issues outstanding for the school corporation, as well as the common school fund loans. And here you'll see in 2025, the school's debt service total payments comes to about 5.5 million. And then beginning in 2026 and thereafter, it begins to decrease, signaling that there is some payment capacity for the school to take on these projects and finance them. And so moving forward to Slide 4, with this being a general obligation bond, it is subject to a certain calculation for every governmental unit. And that calculation is one-third of 2% of the net asset value, and the net asset value for the school corporation is 687 million. And so the maximum debt limit for the school currently for the year 2025 is 4,580,000. But to get to the remaining debt limit, you must take out any principal outstanding for any GO bonds. So the school currently has two GO bonds outstanding, the 2022 and 2023 bonds. So in deducting out those principal payments, we come to the remaining debt limitation of $2,465,000. And this is where this number on this next slide really came from. And this is as of January 16th, 2025. So the next bond payment for these two bonds would be July 15th, 2025, which the school would gain some capacity. But as of today, that is the remaining debt limit. So moving forward to Slide 5, summary of the proposed financing. Again, for the proposed general obligation bonds of 2025, the maximum borrowing amount, as mentioned, $2,465,000. Estimated amount available for the projects, $2,290,000. This is net of cost of issuance, underwriter discounts, so this is money for projects. The assumed repayment term of five years and seven months. Maximum repayment term in your resolutions, you'll see, is seven years. That's just to give the school flexibility, once this legislative session's come through, if they want to extend that repayment term to give a little bit of flexibility. So you'll just see that in your resolution. The estimated interest expense of $449,000. This is assuming a 5% interest rate. If this were to sell today, this would be closer to maybe 4% or even a little bit under with this five-year repayment. So just something to keep in mind, amount of cushion we built in as part of these estimates. And then the estimated increase over the 2025 non-exempt debt service tax rate of, as of today, is zero cents. Again, this assumes no net asset value growth, especially as part of this legislative session. Again, with who knows what's going to be the final product of this session, just building as much flexibility as possible. And again, once we kind of know about that session, we can really, when it comes down to sell the bonds in June, we will have a better idea of what the landscape looks like and can adjust in your payment term as needed. And these final two percentages, I won't really go into, they're just really a legal requirement as part of the preliminary determination hearing. So it's just percentages of the current proposed annual payment divided by net asset value, and then total direct and overlapping tax-supported debt divided by net asset value. So to see what it looks like with the schools existing debt on Slide 6, you'll see here in the light blue bars represents the school's existing non-exempt debt service, and then the dark blue bars represents the proposed GO bond payments. And you'll see here in 2026, we structured this for the total payment to be about 5.5 million, which is in line with 2025 and also target that 79 cent debt service tax rate. Again, this assumes no NAV growth. And again, this repayment term is, you know, preliminary. Once we come time to sell the bonds, we'll get the final amortization. And really, as part of this process, we want to build in as much flexibility for the school as possible when it comes time to issue these bonds. So thank you for your time, and please let me know any questions.
Any questions, Rick? 2.2.
Ms. Alfred, did we have anybody that wanted to speak? Okay, thank you. While no one participated in the hearing, please note that this is just the first step in a legal process. Again, no board action is legally required at this hearing. Rather, this hearing is solely a public hearing comment. The board will continue to work with the administration and professionals to look for efficiencies to conserve tax dollars while meeting our educational needs. The board will hold a second public hearing in this boardroom on March 11th, 2025 at 6:00 PM.
Excellent. All right. Now we're going to transition into a potential refunding. The board would be familiar with this process as we engaged in a refunding just a year ago. Just a little bit of explanation about refunding for any community members that might be listening in, or just a little refresher for those of us in the audience here. We have an opportunity to reduce our borrowing costs and to maximize financial efficiency through the refunding of our 2015 first mortgage bond. This move would allow our district to take advantage of a potential lower interest rate, generating savings while maintaining stable debt service payments. In considering this opportunity, it is important to recognize that the savings generated from refunding would support the district's broader financial stability and allow for greater flexibility in future planning. With the guidance of Baker Tilly, our administration is prepared to take the necessary steps to secure these savings and ensure that Beech Grove City Schools continues to operate with strong financial foresight. As you might recall from our last refunding, this is not a strategy that generates revenue, right? So it's not as if we are sort of generating dollars that would be placed into an account. This is a refinancing, if you will, the word is refunding, but allowing for our debt payments to be lowered as a result of this refunding potential. Any additional words from our friends at Baker Tilly?
We have a presentation, if you want to walk through it.
You bet. Please, thank you.
Yeah, we'll be looking at the presentation that says summary of refunding potential. This won't be relatively quick, but on Slide 2, I won't go into too much detail because I know that the board has seen this quite a bit. But this is just a chart of the exempt debt service and the two bonds outstanding in that fund, the 2015 and 2021 As. And you'll see the 21 As are represented by the blue bars and the 2015 bonds, which we'll be looking to refund potentially in that tan bars. On Slide 3, we pulled together a summary of refunding potential. This heads up the 2015 bonds, their final maturity is January 15th, 2035, so about 10 years remaining on that bond issuance. And here in this middle column is the outstanding information on the 2015 bonds. So just to walk through that really quick, the remaining principal amount on these bonds is $5,65,000. The average interest rate is 4.84% on those bonds. And the call date is July 15th, 2025, so here in the next four to five months. Here in the right-hand column, just to point out, these are per estimated interest rates and refunding scenarios from Robert W. Baird, who, if the school were to move forward with refunding, would be the underwriter on this engagement, and as of February 3rd. So here in the right-hand column, the illustrative of refunding, the bond issue would be $4,940,000 at par. The average interest rate would be 3.56%. The present value savings dollars of $152,000, and this is net of cost of issuance and underwriter discounts, this is actual debt service savings. And then the present value savings as a percentage is 3.01%. And how you get that, it's just taking that $152,000, dividing it by the refunded principal, which is that $5,65,000 number. So and as part of this, the school is establishing a minimum savings threshold of $50,000 for the refunding. This is typical, the school did this last year as well, this threshold amount, so it's nothing, nothing new to the school. And just a kind of, this is a formality, really. This is not, the school doesn't have to move forward refunding. It'd be, we're planning to sell here in the next month, and if rates take a turn and there's no savings, the school is not obligated to refund these bonds. This is just a process to get it approved and give the school flexibility. But yeah, if rates were to take a turn and there's no savings, no need. We just spent 10 minutes during a board meeting to approve some things, so thank you. Let me know any questions.
Okay, so I need a motion, right?
So then, yes, so tonight, all that we need from the board is to approve the resolution that approves the refunding of the 2015 bond.
Can I get a motion?
I'll make... Oh, I'm so sorry.
You know what? How about I go Tara? And April, I sure, you want to second?
I'm all about saving $150,000.
Right. Everybody's excited about that one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, minutes and claims.
I'll make a motion, we accept the minutes and claims for January 2025.
I've got April M. and Brian on both.
Yeah, they're...
Yep.
Oh, I thought they were together.
And they're both, one's a specific date, the other one's 2025. Or minutes and claims, I'm sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Quotes, bids, and donations.
I'll make a...
Actually, we don't have any.
I'll make a motion to do both of them.
At the fundraisers, fundraiser field trips?
Yes.
Okay. Janice on both, can I get a second? Beth, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So I'm still writing?
Yes.
They're famous for their, their calculus. Yes.
They're like jeep horses on roller coasters.
They really do. Thank you so much.
Committee reports.
So we're a little bit early for the C-9. I have a board meeting in two days, but just kind of a recap of the organization on Thursday for C-9. And there was an open house, I mentioned last month, at the end of January. at the end of January, and it had a pretty good turnout is what I heard from Dr. Kuhmack. But that's the only bit of information I've got right now. I'll let you know more after this week.
Board member superintendent successful?
I have one. Because, and this goes out to your teachers. I went to the All Abilities Basketball Game.
Yes.
It's the freaking cutest thing I've ever seen. It was the most fun basketball game ever. Those kids are adorable. And I said, I envious myself to the teachers because I really know them, but...